I'd like to call the planning board meeting for first on our agenda is approve the minutes from last meeting. Second by Dave, second by Norm, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is approve our lease voucher. So moved by Brad, second by Tim, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
First on our referrals is twenty-four eighty-eight Rainout Boulevard, would you come up to the mic?
Good evening. So we're looking to expand, originally in our amended business plan, we had plans to merge into an existing warehouse. In, I believe it was October, maybe the beginning of November, we had been in discussion with our current landlord. And there was a roof leak, so plans have kind of changed. There's a available space that we are currently renting. So we have spoken with the landlord and expanding into that current space where we have currently. And kind of foregoing the warehouse at this point until the roof is fixed. We do have additional plans to expand with those kennels. So originally we had asked for a total of sixty. The reason we had asked for a total of sixty is because I'm a New York State Registered Municipal Shelter. We abide by all of New York State laws, regulations, we have been inspected and approved by New York State and the municipal shelter. Earlier this year Niagara County SPCA eliminated a few local municipal contracts. Leaving those cities without place for their stray dogs. I was able to get approved to be a municipal shelter, I was happy to do so. So originally we had asked for a total of sixty kennels to offset the community. Since we are at this point able to take on the current warehouse, we don't need a total of sixty kennels. We currently have fifteen kennels. We would like to expand as we've been approved for ten previously, we would like to ask for thirty at the total. In case we do face a hoarding case, as of, you know, holidays are coming up, puppy returns, et cetera. So I do have an amended business proposal that I printed out from stating the original ten to sixty that I'm asking for thirty.
Question, the little highlighted square?
That's correct.
Is that the space we're talking about?
That would have been the warehouse. That's where the roof leak is, and I have pictures to provide evidence of the roof leak. Just because I can't house dogs in somewhere where I know it's not safe for those dogs.
So you're gonna put the dogs in this existing square?
Yep, so currently I have suite two, which was on our last proposal that we are approved for. I have updated into suite three and printed out multiple copies. If anybody wants to look at several copies with that.
Which is point one, two, and three, I don't, it's not marking.
Yeah, so, sure, so this is all suite three. And then currently where I'm at currently is suite two.
So is suite three the next piece where the dotted line is?
So I believe that, I believe on the copy that you have, it does say that pit check on that copy.
It's that one.
In white, so that's actually suite one, that's where the number is, that the glitter paw is grooming is. So the next two over from that would be suite two.
So David, picture the front of that pile, on the far left, which is valley used to be, right, that's number one. Number two is right next to that, where I want feed store used to be, right, number two, and where ninety-five fitness was, is number three.
Correct. So we're gonna be where, we're currently now with Island Feed Store is, and where we're asking for the expansion, where we have dogs, is suite three, where ninety-five nutrition.
But you were already in that state, Scott.
Yep, that's why I said where we currently are, correct.
Anyone on the board have questions?
So where does this, where does this fit into these one, two, three, is this two or is this three?
That is three.
That was three.
That's correct.
Does that go past the point where the other warehouse is, or the terminated where is that?
It, it does not go past that, that line where the warehouse is, no. So our backyard space is right on that line.
So you have one, two, and three?
I do not, I have two.
Two?
Correct.
And is there access between two and three?
There is, through the backyard, there's not direct access. So we can go from, you know, we have to walk out of this suite into another suite.
Yeah, I'm still confused. The pit check is one?
Technically, no, I'm not sure why that was highlighted that way, that's actually glitter paw's grooming spot.
Okay.
So we are in the two suite next to where it states them.
Next suite, so there's three suites total.
Well, we would only have two, that's, that's correct.
Someone else has one.
That's correct.
Alright.
That's okay.
So only drawings that were sent out, those pictures that were sent out?
That's, that's currently three. That's our kennel space in three.
And what are you asking for tonight?
An expansion, we have currently, we're approved for ten kennels, I'm asking for an additional twenty.
How many dogs are there now?
Currently nineteen. So, not in suite three, currently, so we have approved for ten dogs in suite two, those are four. So we have an additional nine from Niagara County.
So you have fifteen in suite two and fifteen in suite three?
We're at.
There's only now fifteen.
Yep, that's correct.
What is the square footage of two and three?
Um, I don't have exact numbers, I know that suite two is just under twenty-one hundred, and I believe that suite three is just under nineteen hundred.
And there's all sorts of regulations on sizes of crates and.
Yep, and we abide by all of those, by New York State Agriculture and Markets, and I have that inspection.
Okay, so I would, I would say that any approval would have to subject that as well.
Yep.
To those approvals, because this isn't, this isn't something that you're gonna help department those in general.
New York State Agriculture and Markets, markets, correct, and we are in approved shelter. I have to register certifications, and I also have the inspection report. And New York State Agriculture Markets does not notify us when they come in to do inspections. Prior to becoming a New York State Municipal Shelter, I spoke to the head veterinarian and the inspector personally to make sure that prior to us getting approved, that we abided all New York State laws for kennel space.
The only access to two and three is from the front, correct?
Uh, front and back, there are front and back doors, correct. Yes, and we would like to keep them separate, because the dogs that come in as a stray, we don't know what their vaccination or medical history is. And the dogs that come into is private boarding and training, and I know that all of those dogs have been fully vaccinated and vetted prior to arriving. We would like to keep that separate to minimize any contact of unvaccinated dogs.
Plan to use the backyard space at all?
We do, yep, we have fencing out in the backyard.
Oh, there is now?
There is currently, yes. We pay, we plan to expand that for the municipal dogs per suite three.
Where does the fence go?
Uh, the fence would go, if you look on the drawing that was just passed out, it is marked in the back.
Was that the picture?
Yeah, and so we have additional fencing that we are waiting for installed. Uh, no, actually, right now it's about fifteen by fifteen, and we have four more yards that will be installed.
Four fifteen by fifteen, we need areas.
That's correct.
Where, where those go?
Those will be in that, that's, that entire back space. Because we have a current yard space in the back area of the ten by seven, so they'll all be connected to each room.
When, when next comes inspection, those that exterior outside areas, are those given inspections as well when they come in?
That's correct, they walk the entire facility, yep, they check the, all of the kennels, the sizing, they check.
People's dog.
They check the outdoor, the indoors as well, make sure that we obviously have enough food, supplies, water access.
Is there any type of, give the, drainage requirement in your kennels?
There is not, there is no law asking for drainage requirements, and there's many shelters that don't have kennels with floor drainage.
So how do you, how do you handle the dog, do you have like something they are sitting on top of and then that's it?
We do, we have kennel decks, and we have elevated decks for all of the dogs. Yep.
Wasn't sure what they were called.
Sure.
Anyone else have any other questions?
You, you need all these parking spaces.
Um, so on the side of the warehouse, we know, I mean, we can use those parking spaces, but they're not designated to us. We have six parking spaces in front between suite one and suite three that we utilize.
So you don't really have a lot of prep, like occupy these fifty parking spaces.
There is not, that's on the side where the gym is, that's the additional lot. There is not a whole lot of activity in that parking lot.
Dave, that was quoted, the parking lot was expanded back when Snap put in this actually is the gym. That then, that's the requirement for the square footage for the plaza, so.
Casey from building, anything from your end?
Um, no, just that we did an inspection not too long ago, and everything looked good from our end.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from anyone? Motion from anyone?
So we're, we're approving a, the house thirty.
Total of thirty.
Correct.
But that's different than what was originally proposed.
Yes, yes.
Total of thirty between suites two and three.
Correct.
Hang on, Mr. Marson, I need to tell me your board member, yeah, we did, oh, you did, okay, thank you. Everyone's a voter, everybody vote, then, any other questions? Motion from anyone?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
We approve the thirty total spaces. Or suite two and three, or suite two and three.
Correct, and so, yes.
Second by Tim, any further discussion?
I, I would just put in that any certificate of compliance or approval she had to the state should also be attached. Because there's no health department, we don't have like, for a restaurant, we have health department, so she's got approvals from the state, that should be attached.
Also that, that, right, do your motions subject to compliance with Ag and Marcus, we will currently.
Early, did you catch us there? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Russell, thank you very much for coming in. Next on our agenda is one twenty-one Amberwood Drive.
I'm cherished, yeah. We need to have a better breakfast, which was approved. This is before you all before, which is why this is reaffirmation, because we originally applied for a three bedroom. We had our parking configured in a way where the third parking spot that ended the car was not thirty-five feet from the front of the property. So the town ended up approving us for two bedrooms, which was fine, we were still working on remodeling the third bedroom. And we timed that with renewal time, so now we're just, we moved the parking spot to the appropriate spot now, and code enforcement has gone out to inspect everything and approve it, and so now we're just kind of going through the logistics.
Casey, anything from building?
No.
So you're going from two to three, is that what you're asking for now?
Okay, see, does that mean that you guys inspected, everything is good?
Yeah, yeah, we looked over the plan, it looks good to us, we've done inspections on this one too, have never found anything wrong.
Okay.
Have you, the Ben Breakfast has been active now for the last two years?
Um, we opened in May of this year. Yeah, we've had ten or eleven guests, whatever, you know. Yeah, just had a, uh, two couples come and stay, they were visiting their sister for Thanksgiving, and didn't want to drive off again. So it's a nice option, because we have so many people, you know, still down there, options, not at worst.
I, I have one question. Shows parking one, two, and three, and one and three are stacked. So if I was number one, renting one group, and I wanted the three, three was there as well, they would have to move along, you know.
It's not how I would like it, but it's how I have to meet.
Can't, can't we just do one, two, and three straight across?
There's, um, it would block an exit door from the house and the pathway that goes behind there, it, I wouldn't feel safe with it that way.
I don't, I don't think we'd ever rent that individual. One of the rooms has a monk bed in it, and a set of kids, a four or five two six. So we would rent, one of the kids could protect it a lot. Four of the kids, we never just devote by itself, and never, we never devote by itself, so you really, you can serve it three different parties to the house.
So it's unlikely to have.
It's very, very unlikely that we'd have a three car, just, yeah. Um, you know, ideally I'd like to have all three rooms together and just do, you know, a, a common group, obviously, so, yeah.
Keep in mind, who reveals could, you, easily count their garage stays as a parking space, we asked them not to, and they said, okay, we can still get around it. So that's something they could do by law, we, we have to.
Anyone else have any questions?
So do you know, are there other that are present on the, on the street or in the neighborhood there?
There are, I believe now, ten, four, eleven on the island toll, not on our street. Yeah.
So, um, would you provide some landscaping then between your car, one and three, and the neighbor's property, just depending?
We already have it there, the town requires it.
There is, okay.
Yeah.
There's, there's, uh, on the, uh, front of the, there's mirrors, it's sweet, it's really tight, and the bushes, it's just a, it's small. Probably not rubbing, there are fast ones that is a good though.
You have other questions from anyone?
I, I would just, I think, I would just reiterate what Bob, says he has to, it said a lot this, that according to four oh seven one quarter C, it's not compatible with the marine development, it's a commercial enterprise, we do order, by the way, I think, to the point you just made, that it'd be only one that area, so we are a commercial establishment, a visiting square area.
I think town code requires that we have to be residential in order to do a bed and breakfast, so, just to be super clear on that. If you consider a bed and breakfast a commercial establishment, that's town code requires that it's only eaten in residential property, it's, it's kind of confusing, right? So, I mean, people are literally like sleeping in our house, we don't see them all day, because they go up through the falls, and they come back and go back to bed, it's not.
But it's certainly not compatible with anything else, on the street, definitely also.
Well, I guess it depends, you know, so, uh, Mr. Harmerson had his office out of his house for a while down there, you know, as a commercial enterprise. People that work from home, you know, and you wouldn't do commercial that there.
Yeah, typically in the houses, people drive in there, park the seat, get that up, you know what?
Right.
Just like you do.
Right, and if we were long-term renting, we would not have to be here, we, you know, I mean, if just because people are staying for twenty-eight days or longer, I guess it changes the way that the age trend. So.
But to that point, people are working singularly in a house, is that, then perhaps own, as part of, or as people visit you, that no one. So that makes it more of a commercial sale.
Or then somebody wants to be renting, that's great, that's long-term thing.
Dave also.
How would the city, do we have any, we got a bed practice on that?
Yeah, I'm not sure where they're all located, but this one was.
I don't feel, it's a.
Yeah, they're all in.
In the next area.
One's on, one's on, is, I don't know, I think it's the back of Kirkwood there, Norm, way in the back there, there's one.
I do recall there'd be a pretty significant, um, residence in the school, we're not its favorite, which showed up at our last meeting.
Yeah, we had seventy-two signs up in our neighborhood saying, no bed and breakfast, we're down the street now, the neighbors next to us, and we kind of bring later. The lack of a better term, gave up and have moved out, because they realize we're not breaking the law, we've been very respectful, or any person. We are not there to cause.
And just for that, I'd like to say they had the opportunity to send to see others, or even come to a nice meeting, that showed their presence. There's no one here, and we received nothing.
And the last challenge, or we knew that we were at because of renewal and all of that, no, no one has shown up. So I, I think, um, that they're understandable fears of the unknown, which there's nothing scarier, right? I think they have realized that, um, maybe it's, you know, we're gonna be the song, and it's not gonna be a, you know, a scenario like we have.
Or it could be weathering.
Well, the weather, for sure, it's definitely why they moved, the one.
Okay, any other questions? Motion from anyone?
I'll make a motion, okay.
Second motion, motion by Brad, second by Norm, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, that was carried, you're awesome.
Thank you, appreciate the time.
Okay, next on our agenda is, um, to change the PDD to remove zoning code to eliminate us. Now, in the past, we've had a lot of controversy over the PDDs. I know Long Range did a bunch of studies on it. Chairman Sharp talked to different townships and tried to find out how they were handling these things, and everybody, I think, calmed down that it's some type of an issue. So at this, what Mr. Marst, Houseman Marston is putting across, their deputy supervisor, is putting across here is.
That guy. The supervisor a lot.
Is to, is to remove, eliminate the PDD districts.
I, I could pop on, but.
Okay.
So, by the way, regarding, uh, the last one, we do have, we've been at the breakfast lot, we've been kind of back and forth with for a couple of years, I think, if you're gonna see that, hopefully. There's not anything to do with their project, it's just a different way of working your bed and breakfast, and kind of, it puts a little more, uh, on us, on the, I mean, operator to be present. When the rental is appearing, so it draws the line a little further between Airbnb and, you know, or I'm sorry, a tourist home and the Airbnb. You'll, you'll see that, I know. Uh, anyway, back to this, excuse me, I wasn't done this today, so I'm not speaking truly clear. But, um, my story, Sharon, I think, I think Chairman Bruno, Bruno Nellis, you've been struggling with PDDs for quite some time. So we felt the best way to handle them is to get rid of them altogether, and not really have that as an offering anymore. What, what there is, is there's still incentive zoning, which is another path to do this. So, um, the thought is, if you're gonna rezone, it should benefit the town, period. And if you are benefiting the town, you qualify for incentive zoning, doesn't necessarily need to be money, it could be certain lands, it could be allowing a bike path to pass through your property, it could be minimizing density, it could be fixing a traffic problem. Um, putting a light in, uh, around it, or whatever, you know, so we kind of, as a board, have talked about this for a while, and never really get the bottom of it. So it seems like the best way to do this is just get rid of it and go the other way. And keep in mind, the PDD was actually a zoning classification, so what you've got a PDD on the zoning net, the property became PDD. Now with a set of zoning package, it stays with the underlying zoning, the PDD isn't overlooked. Therefore, it can, it has to be renewed, and after, after it's been renewed, if it's not active on it, it can be expired. And basically, the property then reverts back to the original zone, the base zone, which, uh, to me made a lot of sense, because I know how many CR that we had switching to something else. That we switched for projects that never went through, um, I'm not a big fan of spot zoning. So this kind of keeps the underlying zoning play and just allows extra uses. So, uh, we felt it was a better tool to work with, so we thought we'd go along, see how everybody felt about.
Anyone have any questions?
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we are grand, but I don't know those that are in classes.
So the ones that have already been accepted as PDDs, um, and most of the stuff we got out there, I can tell you, was rezone PDD and then sold, and then purchased with a PDD type zone. So to revert the zoning on that would probably be a uphill battle, I don't think it's worth fighting. Because that starts a lot more of a taking, if that anything else. We're trying to make sure the supplies go forward, you know, anything new coming in, so we can have a little bit more of a a stance saying, okay, this is what you want to do, great, it's not gonna sit there for twenty years with an approval, waiting for you to do it. It's gonna, it's gonna be a finite time, but we're not gonna be over, over zalled, so I think this board has even seen a rendition of a PDD long, once, and we, we, you guys struggled with the, the sunset times. And that is, that's valid, that's the biggest problem we're having.
Right, because you had to, I remember that special, you had to, you have to provide them with long enough time.
Correct.
A secret, all the things that they're helping to move to get.
Right.
That all takes time, and two, you have to give them ample notice, say, hey, you know, we have a five-year sunset, we have to make sure they're notified.
Right.
And then, this is gonna expire, you have to, you know.
Right, and, and take some kind of act. Part of that, Brad, if you're changing the, the rules on that zoning, when stuff already existed in that building, so it was kind of, it was got a little tricky.
Let me ask you that, that, why can't we apply that standard to an existing PDD that's stagnant?
You can't, you'd have to go through, you'd have to go through a public hearing, and try to rezone it.
If we're gonna make a new open law limiting them, creating an incentive by zoning just to, however you wanna word it, why can't we at the same time add that to any existing PDDs that have been, I don't know, what, terminology, I mean. You know, they have five years from acceptance of this law, to, you know, moving, and then notify the owners of that property, you have, you're on a five-year clock.
I'm, I'm advised by our attorney, they recommend that being a very difficult scenario to change somebody's zoning after they purchased property with it, this is just a better way.
But, but according to this, they do have to put in within two years, and explain the process.
But they're buying, they're buying it, I would, they're not getting zoned, again, they're getting over it.
So to Brad's point, or at least there's some touch point, where somebody has to come back and tell you exactly their progress.
Yes, yeah, so, so there is a reporting thing, yes. Um, they, I think, as a special use of, for one year, we just renewed it one for another year, which we know wasn't doing that badly. You know, if three, four years expire here, and you don't see a positive or a definitive direction on, on giving this rather done, it just, it can be pulled off without public hearing, you know, we just basically say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be your, your, your special use on, on both of it, so.
When I was reviewing this, I wanted to go back and look at the original, and I could not find section four oh seven one twenty-one J or K in our building.
We took it, we hit it on, okay.
I looked numerous times, I can't find it.
Yeah, it took, I know the attorney, I didn't look back at it, and I just kind of brought the stroke of the hot word, so I didn't go back, I don't know if my attorney showed that, it'll be extremely out of order.
Okay.
Yeah, I want, I want to hold the fact that I can't find the unit.
That under section three there, that J, within two years of development plan of, development plan approval, they have to ensure any deep build, plan approval, and commence all construction, or all shouldn't be there. And so commence construction, which shall mean excavation, which shall, which shall mean excavation. And shall not include treat clearing, reading, or the site preparatory work, you can't do site, can't do construction without preparatory work.
No, they're saying you just can't go site cleared and go, that's my investment, I'm done, and now I can set, you can't call that your, your, your state.
But you said, instead you have to commence construction, but yet you can't do site.
No, no, that, site clearing doesn't count as construct, under the definition of construction.
So your, so your blueprints and your engineering and your site clearing aren't really like that you're started, you're, you're actual work up here.
Look now, doesn't mean probably.
Go ahead, Kate.
I don't know.
Norm, Norm, what section are you on here?
Section three, section three, okay.
So, I think what you're saying, so. Foundations, that that's, that is, that is.
Building utility and building road.
We've added sewer structure. Water and roads, all that kind of.
Through land, just to say.
I mean, I mean, yeah.
For twenty years.
I had, I had something to do one time with uh Attorney Spencer and he clarified that, that blueprints, you're going there, you're in the lot distance, you really starting, you gotta put the waterline in or start the road or. You have to like do something on the land itself, you can't just.
Keep in mind that, that, that's amending what we consider a PDD. So it says, and development district section shall be amended to read its entirety style. So this is the amended part of that.
So I thought this was to eliminate it all together and now we're amended.
Well, it is.
Amending it for those that are already in.
Correct. Correct. Amending the one that exists, the limiting that is being new per.
So, so, so basically.
So what I just said about giving the ones that exist a timeframe to start, you're actually doing it.
Right.
Yeah.
Even though he's bought the property from.
So, I'm not a lawyer, I don't intend to be.
Right, that, the one that we approved the solar panel product.
Right, so that, so he has, you can't just say, hey, you just bought this thing and now, now we're taking, you have to, you got a chance to.
Right, right.
So you're giving them these two years to get raw.
Yes.
So now if he doesn't do it for two years, then he comes back and work. And you can do what you're gonna do with that.
Don't have, say. Uh, stop.
No, no, sir.
Hold on, I'm sorry. No, I, no, I, I beg your asking. Yeah, no. No, I was gonna say COVID threw a lot of projects into thing, have you ever had like that?
No, we, we, we got it, we got, thank you.
Yeah, I would suggest the timeframe being lengthened instead of two years, give it a little bit longer because these are kind of major projects, these are the major projects, there are a lot of mechanics that go into them, including the funding and you need to fund them, you need to, for certain process. We would suggest probably five years, five years first in the environment.
So, re- remember, this, this, that again applies.
Yeah.
That applies to exist, that already exists in PDD. What we're telling you is we're not gonna take any more new PDD application.
I understand, but for those that are already approved, we have some that are twenty years, you said? Well, that's twenty years, that's too long, but five years I think would be more reasonable than two years.
We're not being unrealistic, if anybody comes in after two years and think, well, we've done this, this and this already, okay, we're working on it. But when you walk away for twenty years?
Because the concept, so that'd be two years for the concept plan. So that's pretty realistic.
But that's, that's also come back and talk, that is, if you, we're gonna instantly pull it out and then do.
Well, humanity. Want to ask you this question.
I guess you could like, oh, schedule.
Really, in terms of the timeframe of a major project, just from seeing, it seems like a little longer would be more reasonable.
So do you think, so just to spit out here on section J, you think uh within five years of development plan approval? That make you feel better?
That's what I would.
Okay. Cause I already.
Oh, minimally that word.
One, one point I wanna make, there's also a section in town law that says after two years, the town board is capable of pulling your PDD. So that's already in another town law. So now we're gonna have two laws, let's say, two different things.
Oh, isn't that the part where it's a string?
No. So. There's also, that, there's another town law, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but we've been down this road before.
Ted, look, bottom line, everyone we fellas, those that are, it's a pretty uh contentious, if you will. We're just trying to leave the plan.
That was, now, isn't the, I'm just gonna use the Whitehaven as an example, isn't that concept plan been removed? Like years ago, all the lots were already out.
Three is ten years.
No, not going three, there were one down the street or closer than golf course, David.
Oh, Whitehaven Farms, yeah, yeah, Whitehaven Farms, right. That, I mean, once again, but Whitehaven Farms is a weird one, because the only reason it went PDD is that there, so the lot that was zoned R one D next, eighty by one sixty lots. The geometry of the property resulted in six, seven, eight lots out of a hundred and ten, whatever, that could not be done rather than losing lots with developing, you couldn't get a variance, obviously, uh area variance for each one is impossible to achieve in order to stay with that lot count petition for PDD, you know, that's, so this one really is residential and residential, it just has a couple smaller than R one D side lots.
But wasn't that concept?
That, well, it was, yeah, completely that one, that one, there's even a backhoe, at least in the first phase.
So that was approved, I buy it. Now, it's already a concept plan, who, I got two years to get rolling on doing something there, putting the waterline, starting the roads, whatever. And if I can't, if I get bungled up in the core or TDC, I would just come to the town board and say.
Well, I'm, I'm confused in what you said, because we're saying no new PDDs. But we're putting in rules that you're saying are applying, the new ones, because it said the existing ones are okay. I, I don't understand what this law is saying then, because then you're saying, well, we can do PDDs, but it's under an incentive. I, I'm foggy on it's understanding how, what you guys are doing.
Okay. That's, well, wait, is there anything in the code about incentive zoning?
Yeah.
Yes, and, and, and it said it's an overlay?
Yes.
So why don't we keep PDD, but make that instead of a zoning district, it would be an overlay? And just put the incentive zoning verbiage in the PDD. I don't, I don't think we should just keep.
Basically what we're doing.
It should be, I think it, personally, I think it should be a PDD as an overlay. And also have the incentive zoning.
As part of your.
As part of the PDD.
That gives you the team to negotiate with them tomorrow.
Yeah. And then also, you're still gonna have the same issue with sunset times, right, with incentive zoning.
And incentive zoning has the expiration.
All right, well, yeah. Why not have the same expiration?
With system of PDD.
With PDD.
That might first. But I think what we got hung up when we were writing this, I, I said with nothing, is he couldn't apply the same rules going forward as he could the things that were PDD. The things were a little bit different, that's where it got weird. Cause I kept saying, why don't we just put a Twilight on PDD? I think we just stopped, make them say, they're worth, they're good for five years and then they have to go.
And the town can rezone or go through the rezoning process on any parts of the law.
And then you give it time, yeah.
So, with existing PDDs, I mean, just say, they have to now go through, if they don't do anything in, say, two years, they have to convert to the new PDD overlay district and get it removed or something. And just force them to get.
I don't have a timeframe for that, they actually, Twilight, I have.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what I was saying.
But compliant, yeah. Yeah, so.
But I'm confused, because I said that you said, no, we can't do that, but then J, that's what that's saying.
That's, yeah, so I was.
So I'm very confused, and I can't.
Well, I, I got another attorney, a attorney.
Thanks for doing it.
I said, I spent hours trying to explain to him what I was trying to do, can't do that, can't do that, you never had time to spend it, you never had time, he goes, how about we just eliminate it? I said, okay, great, let's get rid of it. And then he gave you this, and I was like, okay, well, eliminate some, that's true, it also has a little bit of, you know, backstory stuff that exists. Um my bottom line is I just like to lose the PDDs the way they are, and put rezoning property on our map the way it is. Have it sit there for twenty years like a dog and have a different path to do with it. And uh that's kind of why I pushed it the other way.
Right, and I think where Tim's going is, is convert it to only an overlay, because you've had, we had discussions where the zone up to PDD is up. Okay, now it's just PDD on the map, going to an overlay, um and as Tim said, putting the language of the incentive zoning right into the PDD. You want, you want this overlay and you want these defined uses you wanna put on it, then what's the betterment for the community aside?
Ken, can you remember, because you were, you were there when we were talking to Attorney. You remember why he wouldn't do that, there was a reason.
So yeah, I was with you, I had a better head when I came here and now I'm all confused.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was, it was six months ago.
Yeah, well, two, two of the big things is not getting away from things sitting on books for too long.
Right.
Make sure that there's constant, you know, updates and action, so we, we did that two years because of some of the other language that was in there. And that was about ownership too, it was about, you can't identify properties solid, but there's a responsibility for you to see private.
Right.
Um, but I understand what, yeah.
So the whole, the whole rationale of doing it was to, to build Twilight, was not be able to apply it to a property and have it go decades without being built or, or done.
You have to do something to take care of the one that you've already approved, right?
Yeah, and you still have to maintain that to a point, yeah, just going forward, and, and, and I don't disagree with what you're saying, to why you put the same version in PDD law. You know, and make them follow the set of zone. Or, or do you just get rid of the PDD and make them follow set of zone?
I, I, I've never thought of incentive zoning as like a solid law.
Okay.
Because all of a sudden, you're like, I, if you build a, Tim Wharton delivered it, you can do your project, you know, it depends who's making the decision where.
I agree.
More of a structured.
How is it more structured?
Um you can, well, what, what is it saying incentive zone? Does it just say whatever's good for the, the town?
A beneficial uh change for the town.
With PDD, I mean, does it talk about uh you twenty five percent open states? Or, you know, there's certain fees or certain, you could put more guidelines and structures into the PDD law, rather than just saying, you know, whatever fits the town. In incentive zone.
Yeah, it seems like there's not a new criteria.
Yeah. And then all of a sudden, you're gonna be, you're gonna say, okay, well, we asked for a pack in this one, but in this one, we require a golden palace, you know.
Yeah, but we'd have to state that, we'd have to tell them the restrictions.
So, so I think, I think there, and I understand your, I understand your point, how do you get more, or maybe you're asking more on one person than you are the other. Um I think that's where you're going with this, right, it's not consistent. But I can also say that, for example, uh a place like the Madison that was undersized, but had a great amendment to offer potentially with the river walk and the tight launch and stuff, which the guy at the corner ransom and uh twenty points, not gonna do a offer either one of that. Therefore, that PDD, that's a little different ask from that property owner to this property owner. So, so as much as the rules are good, it's also gonna have some flexibility because we're working a different thing. You know what I mean, it's not all a square in a lot. I'm saying, what do you get?
Yeah, well, I, I mean.
I mean, I'm not trying to, no, no, they're not kind of, they're both cloudy, I've just seen a lot more litigation with incentive zone. Okay. With PDD. Okay. Well, we didn't, so Grand Island, you get PDD, you don't ever build it. That's just.
Well. Yeah, but would, would you eliminate that problem if you just have that the overlay rather than?
Oh, I agree with that, but I'm gonna tell you. That's why we went into the, so, that is where we went to the meeting with the attorney of power, was putting Twilight on, and he said, you're better off getting rid of it. And that was his.
Well, what are you gonna do in incentive zone? You're gonna have.
In incentive zoning, certainly.
But you're gonna have Twilight and Sunset there.
Yeah, but that doesn't change.
I think that's why I'm saying, change PDD to overlay instead of.
Okay, I can go back and ask them why we did that, I don't really know, so we did this six months ago. So, it was kind of, it was around totally.
Yeah, it got a little busy during elections, nobody wanted to talk about it. Is it possible to predicate this, to say, no PDDs forward, but the existing ones have to follow section three J?
Yeah, well, I think that's kind of what he had in mind.
The leeway to kind of subside it.
That's too easy.
Yeah.
Something you're saying, no, but it's like, but then you wanna do exactly the same thing in college incentive zone.
Right.
You did it. That's what I.
Maybe then incentive zoning itself does.
They have a, they have a set of rules, guidelines and thoughts that are pretty darn well, I mean, we ran into, you know, you take South Point and, and you go, okay, it's thirty years and they didn't do anything. It's five or six different owners, it was developed under a Canadian group on the economy crash up there that was completely, you know, there, there's each one in of itself that we give, it's been different. And is it wrong to say, hey, because they did nothing, no, you can't, I mean, sure, it would be really valuable to go, let's look at it again in a couple of years if it hasn't had activity. And is that proposed use still fitting in with the way the island's from, has it changed in ten years? And then are those things no longer really working in what's happened around it and being able to look at that piece? That makes a lot of sense. And, and, you know, there's, there's definitely a look, should be a look back, it should be a right update period for these things. But, you know, scrapping the idea of going PDD, calling it something else with incentive zoning, I, I don't know what we're achieving. You'll have the same issue other than one's an overlay rather than a zone.
Correct.
Yeah, so just change PDDs to be an overlay.
Now, how's it gonna work now that the rent is off for sale?
There we go.
Batter?
Sorry, Jason.
Jason, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yes, you guys were muted for a bit.
That's not about that.
But that's, I mean, that's what the P D D is about, is, is a lot, is establishing a plan and allowing uses on something that the base owner says, I don't do.
Right.
Otherwise, there's no reason to have it, anything else is a lot side variance or something like that. It's, it's, it's really, it's a huge variance on a very high level.
We just approved the town center as a P D D, right? Here, behind your plate.
Yes, yes, but then it's kind of tight over.
Well, that, well, that wasn't an open, not Tim's point.
Do a, do a turn thinking. No, it's not a rezone.
It was done as a P D D.
Overly, I'm pretty sure. It's an overlay and we use instead of zoning package because we asked them to give us a, a uh, um, recreational area for the town going forward in the future.
I don't.
So we only really put one use on, I think.
Uh, well, I'm sure this board approved it as a P D D or recommended.
It was, it was a P D D because you've got also some excuse, now you've got.
But I believe it was put out as an over, just put out as an over.
Then why did they need to purchase more land for twenty five eight third zone? Yeah.
That's how we got still.
That's how we got there, started one way and finished another.
Isn't that then what Tim was suggesting?
That's why, I, I tell you, I mean, the same suggestion, and I'm trying to remember the life of me, but they, but they finished it, I can't, that there was a reason for it. So, I apologize, I guess I'm unprepared.
Tim, do you wanna make your motion, make that a motion?
You basically.
Yeah, I think that.
You know, I, I mean.
I, I don't think well in front of it should be approved.
I think we'll take it back to the drawing board and get some clarification on a couple of things. So, it sounds to me like you wanna understand how uh, existing P D Ds will be treated? And why don't we just uh, allow or apply all future P D Ds as an overlay versus a zoning change?
Okay, Tim, would you better not tell him then incorporate instead of zoning.
Sort of, sort of you like. Instead of zoning into that whole thing.
And also get the right sections done, because I can't find which one made the third loss.
If you can't find, it can't be found.
Okay, so, so I don't know, you wanna make a motion to table?
Uh.
Why do you have no, how long would those records say that?
I, I would say send back no, for the review.
Okay, we'll clear it up.
Second. I'll second that motion.
Motion by Tim, stuck in my arm, any further discussion?
Um, I have a, just wanted to understand about number six, the most.
Off my page.
With the entire uh, approval and construction process of the private. Number six?
Number six. Oh.
I'm sorry. What is?
Second two, or second, second.
We, it's section two, the.
Okay. That's a good question, I guess.
So, the pieces sound like the applicant cannot sell an approved project. At any point, except if they complete one phase of, is that something like that?
I'm trying to get back to change a lot of order here, I see that. See, no way. No, no, I'll switch it down.
One, second, one, you want?
Second.
Good, here it is, okay. Where we at now? General rules?
No, start with the four. Four, so it's like, so hundred six, which was asked about.
Six.
So at the time of.
Application, development. Considered approval, detailed penalty, we were completion of construction.
Same you got as a result.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the word for word. Yeah.
Oh, okay, so nothing changed there?
No, no, that's just citing.
Thank you.
Past.
Okay.
Past laws, you can't find in the book.
What is it, what does that mean, what does that mean? You can't sell a project if it's been played, but in the construction?
Well.
Like, um, you can't.
So here's the bottom line, people were getting these big switch and selling property.
Yeah.
And that's, it got old.
Um.
They, they would get a switch and they would never have any intention of building it, and they would sell the property with a new zoning report. It would just be like taking residential property and getting it several times.
What is wrong with, what is, what is down, not, how is that?
Sold with the zones. I don't know.
Some of the others are playing to the plan.
Right, that's true. And you throw the plans away.
Well, you look at the panelists, I'm right here, so all the time, it just people in there.
Yeah, right, right. Yes.
Or if somebody came in and we sold it and turned him something.
What if somebody sold a piece of property and it sat there for twenty years? That's what we're trying to stop. If, if we don't move quickly, it will happen again and again, that's why we're trying to get to the bottom.
I understand this is already in the plan, but I don't. I, I don't really agree with that.
Sorry for that.
Yeah, it's already there, so we're not trying, we're really not, it means.
I guess a big question here.
This is the plan.
Should we hear the P D D, is it, is that a zone or not?
Well, well, but that's not what you were just saying.
No, I know.
The problem is that we've got.
Yeah, there is a lot.
Getting rid of the P D D, not getting it.
Right.
I guess we had a motion, second.
Well, hold on, one more to this stuff, so. On top of, okay, we already have these P D Ds, so this will not apply to them. What about people that are in the middle of an approval process? We approved, we approved the corner, the planning board approved the corner of Lloyd Haven and East River.
Yeah, that ended on middle.
You know, that's in the middle.
Yeah.
That would be in the middle. So, are you, you gonna just pull a rug out from under that when they're halfway through that, or? No, he knows people that, so that's what I'm saying, so.
We haven't done that, please.
Break your backs.
The planning board.
Planning board.
Society board back ended, approval of the.
The council. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we, I think it was three or four of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're on the, so the town board approved.
No, I haven't touched that. We wanna get to this first. Oh, so my, my question, my question is for somebody who came in like that, what happens to that plan? They're gonna wait for it to finish it? No, they know how to, uh, no, I'm kidding, no.
We, so you.
Yeah, so.
They would have everything about it.
No. Okay, I was, I was, I would be.
Right, no, it's fine, I just wanna, I just wanted to understand, yeah, okay, so I, I, we're better than them, yeah.
Motion second, any other discussion, all favor?
Hi.
Hi. Anyone a vote?
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, can you repeat the motion?
Oh, send it back to the, the revisers.
No, okay.
They didn't know what we're sending it back for them with all of our comments.
Yeah.
Actually, we met with our last.
All right, that's right.
Okay. I would, I would just take one other comment back, um, doesn't affect the motion, but um, where you're defining commencement of construction.
Yeah.
Limited to excavation is open to, to real intersections, somebody will often take a backhaul.
It's pretty arbitrary, yeah.
Maybe, maybe significant ex- excavation or.
Maybe infrastructure improvement?
Yeah, something.
Does that make sense?
But just excavation, you're gonna lose that every time.
Yeah, that's too.
Yeah.
Wrong. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, communications.
I suggest I do plans to hear the public hearing December eighteen. On this.
No, no.
September eighteen.
September eighteen, that's right.
That's Monday.
Okay, communications received in file one two.
That could be the line, we don't know why you'd have a public hearing.
From today to July.
Today is.
July.
Number three, I wasn't at that meeting, now what can you present this, whether that last meeting long range?
Um, just to type over you, cut the conclusion on this and uh, work on what the projects are for next year.
Okay. Next, long road, we'll leave that, I was gonna finish.
Should we just get about the status report?
It is, it is still in the applicant's court of responding to the comments from the, uh, the towns. You know, the accepted, you know, the accepted files, they did not put on the update, that's where we are waiting for us.
I, I find the listing of the comments on the town website pretty difficult to follow. Don't seem to be very logical and how they put it. Anybody else has found that?
But in order, Dave, or just the comments themselves?
In order, or, they're from consultants, there's some from, uh, public meetings, there's some from, uh, other people that just sent stuff in.
The latter, so the sources.
Didn't seem to be in my mind, so.
Great.
Everybody else white speaking.
I mean, I finished business where Ash broke quarter stains, come on up.
Oh.
You're really good.
I, I, I think they want to think it's, I'm enjoying the life, you know, there's nothing to say. Um, after I think, I think I'm not about, but um, it's also that kind of fun, you die. There's a safe for often, have to like sell a project, like my wife tells me like, five guys, she runs far, she's got a hell of a lot of work to do. And so, I just see self in your feelings, yeah.
Yeah, one year old, you know.
Yeah, yeah, all right, so, you're gonna thank you for your patience, now I'm trying to screw up the other meeting, but um, I finally here and uh, Merry Christmas, right? Um, all right, I thought this is the easiest way to present it, um, what we did, you know, overlays, did the overlay, um, the original um, subdivision with the new weapons elimination. And what we saw, the new weapons are, where it's shown in white, the old weapons are usually around them, but there's a darker gray. And what we saw is, um, a lot of the weapons that are approached in the roads, none used to be there. And so what we did is we told up area disturbing, a mirror at point seventeen. Okay, with it, with a map of it is, and so, um, under the federal permit, we're not allowed to third one happening. So, we were looking to see how could we basically achieve the intent of this plan, but try and avoid twenty eight which more. And you know, one thing we saw was that if the road came right through here, there was a lot that we pushed out of weapons and we, you know, that, that, that we did. And then also, um, what we're looking at is we cut concrete back through here, it, it helped us minimize cutting through that one part of, uh, eighty five. So, and it's nice to show these side by side, because you're trying to see, you know, exactly what we are trying to accomplish. But what we did is we didn't increase any density, um, you're helping me, why not save it? What we, what we're showing is that, you know, the two plans, we tried to keep it almost exactly, you know, as much as we could, but to say, hey, like if we slide this way, we miss a whole bunch of weapons over in here, if we slide this way, we're still actually over, we have to do a little bit of bridge to get it where it's point four eight acres now. But only in time with the time we're looking for the P D D C, for the new delineation, trying to keep, um, the disturbance, the weapon happening here. Uh, we cut the same number of lots, um, basically the same, you know, geometry, um, you know, we, we just stretched through over the road there, avoid that. And, and that's what we're trying to do, um, all the discussions we heard, along this thing is sad and everything else. I want, you know, from the minute we bought it, we were working on trying to get this thing through, and we did actually have a long time to, to even, even because of staffing and corporate issues and stuff like that. That's why I heard someone saying from my phone, you know, sometimes I just wanna end up a little bit outside of the, you know, um, hour. But anyways, we gotta pushing ahead, we wanna do this project, uh, we wanted to follow the spirit of an original, um, flight plan. And really all we're asking for is trying to find a way to minimize disturbance to the new elimination. And our old elimination, my girlfriend, we always had that new elimination, we did that, we came out, checked it off, we were happy with every.
Five years.
Five years?
Five years.
And I was saying.
I have a question, where is the existing home there on the property?
Square.
Little box, big center.
Exactly.
Okay, so where is his driveway currently?
His driveway currently comes up a little, um, maybe here, this, this, this little uh, area comes up in here, that's new that.
Okay, so how are you gonna keep that, uh, giving now?
We've, we've given him a ton of opportunities coming and we, with his, you know, it's a big lot, and I think this is all laid out with, you know, previous owner that we purchased this from. That, that, we thought that John was happy, this is what he asked, and this, this way he didn't sell. And so he knew the roads coming in and said, that was satisfying, so.
They get brought in, they get brought into the development, has occurred that to be installed where a driveway may be necessary. Um, the town board, in its approvals, may, or through requirements of the developer, how they aid with that, you know, I don't, that's.
Yeah, we didn't change, that, 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 that exactly.
So I got that.
When, when that, when that property was for sale, there was an understanding that if that development was ever owned, that a driveway occurred cut somewhere on that property, they would use that east on the coast.
That's a statement, yeah, yeah.
And they would be, they would have, the developer would have to provide that with access to their property.
My, my question is, is, are you gonna leave this driveway in the, when you get started?
No, because that either disappears.
Well, I have to, you have to.
Why can't we give it a road, right, assuming the road is.
How you gonna give the road, it's my question, like if he has an existing driveway, gets to that house now, and you start building a road?
We're not gonna be disturbing.
Does that stay there until the roads? So roads don't.
Right, he, he waved out like towards the, the east end of that property.
You can actually see between these two properties, that double line, that, that's, that's the.
So that's gonna stay for now temporarily, so the road is completed.
Right.
And you connect his property to your new road.
Yeah, and then he'd have water and sewer open up, he'd have the road.
And then his existing isn't. Just.
So let me ask you this, what about this driveway, his driveway is on the east side of that property, and you're now gonna give him access, a curb cut on the west side of that property, are you gonna connect his driveway?
His, his driveway practically break all of the, through the land.
Uh, no, I understand, but so once you get onto his property, his driveway is on the west, the, the east side of his lot currently?
Yeah.
So if you bring his, your curb cut, the road is gonna be on the west side of his lot, who's way to connect this guy?
Yeah, well, what, what we have to do in terms of people, I think, is we have to bring this road up, give him this curb side, make sure he's all set. And work our way around here, then get close that.
So there's a driveway around his house to get.
Once, once, once again, maybe the, uh, approval requirement language, this work and a recommendation of the town, you know? These guys may be constructing kind of driveways they are.
You have to construct the driveway, connect wherever you put this curb cut or whatever it is, to connect to the road to this existing driveway.
Yeah, he, and right now, it, it's, it was a simple ground road, and I know it was, we've been out there, we were, I dropped them on weapons, they're in the name of, I'm trying to say. He dumped, uh, you know, stone in the concrete or whatever, you know, through the wetland and, and they got me. But like, they're all, they, they, they wanted to restore that, get rid of that wetland and, and, and I think our, or the driveway is. They wanted to restore that, get rid of that wetland, and, and I think are any bigger than driveway and button. Um, but my understanding was that when this whole thing was done, this exception was given, that, you know, he knew exactly where he wanted, the roadway coming in and everything else. And, and, but it's, we're gonna change that with a change of thing, but you hear what Brett said.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, so, so the access to his house is down on the east side at this point. Um, I. I'll check too. I, I don't, I don't even know where his driveway, when it comes in here, I don't know where it goes.
So I guess, I guess this is the question. Are you the developer? When you put your road in, do the curb cut, are you gonna connect? That curb.
Bring it from his driveway to.
Wherever his stone is, or whatever he's got that's on his property, are you gonna connect?
Oh, yeah, we could, we could, we could get myself road in there to match up the seller.
And you're gonna cover that cost.
We're gonna do much larger.
And if all the money is over, he has to be able to maintain. A way to get in the balance, and I think he's on that right now, and I, you know, see.
The, the super, what's, what's he addressed, what does he address for that property, do you know?
Um.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah, but. There you go, yeah, that's all I would go through to be.
See it here. Oh, comes straight in, yeah.
Comes straight in, but now you can.
But now we're gonna come, we're gonna come in on this side.
But he had to get around to the other side of his house.
Does it show stolen one? Stolen driveway?
It's.
It's not like a concrete right there.
No, I know, it's a, a, a.
Yeah, it, it, I don't start companies that look for, and, uh, the weapon. And we said, we, we, and I, people didn't see that, we didn't mean that. When, you know, when, when we took out.
We, we understand that, we got that part.
Okay.
I think what we're asking is about that particular owner, how, you know, obviously, when you build this. You're gonna, you just stated that you're gonna put your curb cut in on the west side, and you're gonna run the gravel from that curb cut to his existing drive. That's our first lot, what, what lot?
I, I.
It's not enough, because it's sort of an exception, it's the exception kind of, it's on. Um, keep in mind, this project. Previously, it still complies sidewalks. And those pieces to be done, so that's also a part of this.
So will see all the town roads?
It's a town road.
Yeah, but they've dedicated a little bit of town again.
Have you guys, have you guys approached him to buy that?
Um. No, we haven't.
I, I think that just doesn't fit. That's a big old problem, with the big skill buildings on it, I mean, it just doesn't fit into it, but. So, I mean, I haven't been looking at buying that, they're gonna have this.
I, I was, I was in doubt with the initial purchase, um, in negotiations for that, but I know earlier, he was next to.
Well, that's a different owner from one this project.
This is right, this is how, all right, this property sold. Probably about.
Three times.
It still comes about, I mean, probably about a year before you came in.
That, that's the whole, and so, yeah. Um. I don't know, and, you know, actually, I, I wondered too, um. It's like he was holding that, that's then trying to sell one, two, three, four, five, he had to put in five lots. I don't, you know, I didn't know. He not gonna do it, it, it.
I can't imagine, I mean.
Well, the first, the first owner was, I am keeping my space and I'm not, I mean, I know he dealt with this project back then.
Well, because you know why? Because this thing is sad for how many years, so he. The worst years, or he didn't give it to him. So, but I mean, what, so, give me a basic idea of what price point do you think these things are?
Um, the, the homes are probably gonna be, um, in the fours.
Can you imagine buying a? Four, five, I don't know, and having that big old thing in your backyard? Or across the street?
Well, Brad, I mean, you need to buy a cul-de-sac out the other end.
No, but you don't know the same.
Right, that's why you're thinking it'd be more of these problems.
Right, I mean, that's.
You went there, so that's a lot, that's a lot, you know, we don't get, you know, that's the same thing. Do you really think a hundred pieces of concrete works for the island? We shouldn't let you build one, no, you don't.
No, that's why, hey, I'm saying, hey, you wanna tell us?
I bought, hey, if you wanted to, um, you know, I, I think, you know, I, I had to come on this whole thing, I had to, the doctors, I'm excited. We're referring to all the other, I'd have to see if they have any, you know, additional funds to purchase that, but we'd be happy to. I'll say one thing, when we bought it, we wouldn't be asking for five lots, I don't think it's a problem. You know what I mean? Because then all they did, they all.
It's all existing, it's already there, it's not telling it. People.
Yeah, but the, the process is right now, just going back to what we're talking about today, is an applicant, it's basically asking for. Approval or recommendation approval on a revised preliminary flat. This project was granted for preliminary flat, this project actually went through. Filed a phase one map cover.
Okay, I, I have no issue with the changes there, I think what you're doing is because you have to, that, that's giving me advantage. That I, you know, that there's no advantage to doing this other than you're trying to comply with. With all those weapons, so I, I have no issue. But I would make, I would, I would make a motion.
Well, I, I mean, are you putting screening around this house for your little ass?
What, are we screening houses though? We're in our code, is it saying we're screening houses?
Well, that's, that's the.
Residential residential.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Okay.
You see, it's in, it's in their bottle, or what they want to do, so they have record, I made a motion to.
I made a motion to prepare, I have a.
To, to approve the revised drawing?
Although, it's a little bit of issue that you have played out a house on each one and made setbacks, so.
Yeah.
Certainly the ones in the, or, or west corner. What are they, fifteen, sixteen? You know, the wetlands certainly is significant there, can you get, uh, proper backyard setbacks and, yes. And so on, and not get into that wetland?
Um, we, we, we can, um, and, uh, you know, because those lots flare out, you get this little lot to, you know, for instance, build here. You know, you, you might have to be able to put it exactly where you want, if you know, wrong, but, but, yeah.
I was, well, that's the next stage, so correct. We're, they, they, I mean, we're talking, this is, we're, we're going back to square one of. Reapproving preliminary flat, the overall lot layout of some. Right, so location is the next. We never really did house locations, we, you, you have lots, now they did lot, you know, setbacks or other, they've got the weapons on it, you know, those types of things, we should be seeing that. Um, to know how, where is the buildable area?
And the same thing on some of those lots on the south end there, or.
Yeah, very wide issue.
But no.
So like, here's where they're gonna build, and then they're just gonna have weapons on the property, same as like, you know, this lot, we have all these weapons stacked in here. But so thirty one is a really big lot. And thirty three is a big lot, and look. Thirty two is this whole big lot, so you have to, there's a buildable. Site on that lot.
And then we saw that. Or there's no urgency. Remember Dave.
These are D C's.
D C's. Remember Dave, we saw that on all four of our, all the law of offering, when they did those lots, they were packed with wetlands, and they.
But I think we also saw.
I don't mean the headliner, I was, I was scared, right, the ones there.
People are birds, stuff like that, a lot, there's a lot of, a lot of law and columns, things like that, so.
Brad.
There's an army for it.
Brad, do you want to add to your ease, to your, um. Motion. That the driveway easement will dissipate on the new road, curb cut, and developer stone drive connection is installed. To, uh, existing home?
I think that's, probably in.
Do you want to add this, uh, thought also made that you think that, that social problem? You can add that.
Right.
Charlie, did you get that? Okay, the driveway. The easing easement will dissipate when the new road curb cut and developer stone drive connection is installed to the existing home. Okay, so we got a motion to approve what we've got, we've got this fellow's driveway, and then.
And then we say. Including forty eight buildable lots for, uh, Tom Coe.
And then, and then, and then actually.
I mean, do we need to add that? Bob Westall, do we need to add that forty eight lot designation that's on the plan? Before, and they're gonna be filing a model by flat for forty, forty eight lots, so. Do we need to?
Forty eight buildable lots for the top.
Okay. Is that okay, Brad, Dan?
Yeah.
All right, did you get that too, Charlie?
Yeah.
Okay, any, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I am. Anyone opposed? So which way did you go?
I, I.
Okay. Okay, sir.
Second motion.
Brad made the motion, and. We'll say every day morning.
Hey, but, and the other thing, one other thing, you guys, then I thought I was gonna tap that phone. So I went into that hospital to deliver a baby, but then I just checked in from the dead phone. So, yeah.
The phone is away. You guys, your, your phone.
You're gonna be careful about them, chief.
Okay, what should I take in a Christmas question?
Oh, yeah, my name is John David, B A O Y.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, no, I've got a topic I want to bring up. Shoot. Uh, last month, it was discussed about the design and performance standards that came out. They were sent out to us, and I took the opportunity to print them out, and we threw them out, and it was any items that I don't have. And we were told one thing, and I think we got another.
What's the date on the bottom of that?
Uh, November sixth, twenty twenty three. I mean, just for instance, standards are used as a guide on the first page, but then in the second one, it says, these standards shall be subject to all requirements contained herein. Said that, or didn't care about. Um, just another one. Uh, going forward, talking about the islands that we thought were gonna be removed, and it says, provide separate empty and exit planes. With the landscape island from the road to the parking lot, still in there.
They're gonna throw them out and some of them.
Um.
That should be removed.
There's another item here, it says franchise, franchise architecture should probably be prohibited, that's impossible.